Glad to see you today. Kirk, you're covered in humps. I didn't see it unless it's not bad. I think you're looking into the road.
I'd like to call the order of record being the 19th House of the Board of Commissioners for Wednesday, September 25th, 2016 at 7:02 PM for all managers.
Mr. Harold.
Here.
Mr. Higginson.
Here.
Mr. Bertani.
Here.
Mr. Gregg.
Here.
Mr. Cessenda.
Here.
Mr. Casera.
Here.
And Commissioner Martino.
Here.
Everybody please rise and pledge allegiance to the game of gaming here on town. The range of arms, they're gonna be a new boot right through here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Gracious, holy, and loving God, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, thank you for the beauty of this day. The blue sky and the bright sun were gifts to us today and just reminds us that fall is around the corner, but you are in control of all that you have created. We are thankful this evening for those who serve you by serving this community. We lift these commissioners to you, we lift our fire and our ambulance and our police officers to you. We ask you to guide them with your wisdom and show them your mercy, that as they deal with the pressure of decisions and doing what is best for the greatest number of constituents here in North Huntington, that you will give them wisdom, that you will teach them to be merciful. Grant each person here tonight the knowledge and love that is granted through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Any citizens would like to speak tonight, please sign and vote for voting. We have one citizen who brought down, it's Amy Johnson. First hit was Amy Johnson. Remember this meeting is being electronic, we've recorded and video streaming.
Good evening everyone, I just want to take a moment and say thank you very much to...
Amy Anderson.
Oh, sorry, Amy Johnson, 85, 83, Melmore Avenue, North Huntington, PA 15642. I just want to take a moment to thank Commissioners Harold, Cessenda, and Bertani for working with me and the Northern Lacrosse Club in order to obtain a field for our spring and fall season along with Parks Director Dan Miller. I'm really looking forward to spring, I hope we have a very light winter, that the field's running in a really good condition. And I just really hope that all of the commissioners continue to work towards making sure that the children in this community have safe and enjoyable parks in different places to play and have green spaces in the community. So, don't give up, keep looking forward to the future. That's all I'm gonna say, thank you.
Next citizen is Kimberly Silves. You state the name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Kimberly Silves, I still live at 24, what do you want on your way from Huntington? I would like to address the board commissioners, sending an empty written petition to them. It's brought to my attention that there is a question concerning the current chief of police and his staff. And I wanted to bring it to the attention of these board officers within this department. We just found that their conduct is not becoming enough, the training is not sufficient to do their job. Training is sought out for those individuals. I understand there is an MTO field training program within this department. I'm just saying that it's supported, so taking a look at this, of veteran officers in training. I would only ask that the board also employ additional training if you're not satisfied with the effects of your current chief of police, seek out training that he may also attend. There are several different entities within MOPE, within PSP, as well as state police, within the International Chief of Police Association that do provide training. For supervisor, supervisors in the leadership there are, and they're back before this, that we should decide if someone's not satisfied with his position and how he's doing his job. Thank you.
That's it for citizens, then. Anybody have any comment on the question? Amy Johnson, please. Kimberly Silves. No comment at this time. That's it for citizens, then. Next is approval minutes for the special meeting on 8/11/16.
For this minute, please. Second.
Disagreement. All of them favor the die?
Aye.
Oppose? Aye, that's seven zero. Regular meeting for 8/17/2015.
Most approve. Second.
Disagreement. All of them favor the die?
Aye.
Oppose? Aye, that's seven zero. Recent planning meeting on 8/24/2015.
For this minute, please. Second.
Disagreement. All of them favor the die?
Aye.
Oppose? Aye, that's seven zero. Amy in the bills.
I make the motion to pay voucher number 72808 through voucher number 72896.
Second.
Disagreement. All of them favor the die?
Aye.
Oppose? Aye, that's seven zero. Staff reports. Rick Elbert, does anybody have any questions for Rick Elbert?
Yeah, Rick, how's that new salt moving on?
The salt, the new salt set is completed. They actually finished up last Friday. We had to do some alterations and, you know, we're finishing that up here in the next day or so. We'll have that off and completed. Everything went, for all intents and purposes, everything went well. We had a few obstacles that we had to overcome. But it all worked out in the long run.
How many times did I help you, Jim?
The size of the building actually is supposed to hold 2,500 tons, but I believe we'll be able to have more capacity than that. We raised it up a little bit higher to be able to hold on more material along with, makes it more convenient for trucks to be able to hop underneath it.
Yeah, looks good, it's nice. Okay.
Quite pleased. Thank you.
If they help you. Just one item that I'd like to add.
2016 payment program has been completed, which is a little bit ahead scheduled for previous years. They went ahead and finished the alternative servicing on Friday with the fiber batting along with... The only thing that they have left to do is the grip type, which is the ceiling of the streets, about the alternative servicing. I believe they're scheduled to come on either Friday or Monday, depending on a little better. But everything's completed, everything went well, and we're already working on 2017.
I do have one question for Rich. This, I don't know if Rich can answer this or if this would be a question for Bob Robinson for your assault. I recently received a complaint from a resident on Walker Street in the area Sunset Valley School. And basically dealing with the speed of people coming up and down the road in school hours. One thing I, I want to look into, if you can see the feasibility of it, is I know in Bristol and Hadfield Township, I was having a look on that school, they have speed bumps up there. I don't know if that's something that we should have drawn, maybe have Bob look into to see if the feasibility of doing that, what's involved that, if it's even legal to do that. Just something over there. The other thing I noticed too is for whatever reason, the speed limit through that area, which is residential area, is 25, and most housing claims is 20 miles per hour. So, I don't, I don't know what the difference is there or why it's there. I noticed some type of aspect that it's not considered a school zone. I guess it's because the school is off the road, off that, off that main road, off of Dickens Lane or wherever it is, maybe it's the address. But just, just something to look into, if there's possibly doing something there to call that, or something along those lines. And again, I'm not looking for any action, just personal ideas out there that we can do to, to take care of that area over there.
Well, we did investigate some years ago, various locations, some of the board members were here. I have a recollection of speed bumps, we spent significant amount of time researching that. And there were certainly positives, but there are negatives to go with, with the speed bumps. And I think the board at that time determined it didn't, it wasn't, it didn't make sense for us. Rich Elbert was with the brother staff at that time. I believe we went to Mount Leaven and looked at some streets that had, and we actually talked to some residents who lived near them, and they weren't happy with them. They said people speed between the humps, they're very noisy, they make a lot of noise when cars come over them. Now, there could be other residents that were satisfied, but the ones we spoke with that just happened to be there, we weren't looking for them, weren't happy, we kind of told them who we were, what we were doing there. So, we could entertain that again, but we, we spent some time on that and did thinking it worked for us. That's not to say places don't do it, maybe it's successful, but that's up to the board how you...
Right, I, I understood, you know, I'm all looking for any action, I'm just a feasibility, it's awful, what it would take to do it, how it would be done, how it would affect snowpalling or anything.
It's a concern, it's a concern for drainage. But communities certainly do it, it's just a matter of, does it really, does it really work for, you know, what you're, what you're trying to accomplish? And we thought it was maybe more of a detriment than a...
Right, I understand that, and that would be something, I would talk to the residents in that area as well, if they're feeling annoyed, that's all before any action. I believe there may be other means as well to, to control that also. But just wanted to get the going out and see what the remaining issue is. Thank you.
I'd like to address it also. We recently, that was the work order I returned to you today, Mr. Shepherd.
For Whitehead.
Yes. Marver Street, a citizen down there did complain about the school bus speeding. We went down there, we had to place the NASCAR lights down there, and we're also going to plan to place our speed sign down to the green and see what exactly the speed is. I can tell you, as I told the resident, that on one of the streets, we had complaints about vehicles doing 65, 70 miles an hour. I went down personally and I went across that there for several hours, counted the number of vehicles going by, and they were all within that 10 mile per hour median we had to give them, according to state, be a NASCAR or, uh, NASCAR or spot watch. So hopefully someday the legislature will grant us radar, which will allow us to do things at a much more easier basis. But I'm, I'm until now, unless we get to 35 or above, there's really nothing we can do, cite the speed laws. And Mr. Bertani and Mr. Cessenda and Mr. Casera, you weren't here last year for the Lincoln Hills debate. If you remember, the board remembers, at that time, they wanted the speed bumps put in there. And what we got back from the state was on the guidelines board is, it's almost the same guidelines or warrants as spot watch. Number one, you can't use them unless they're down to speed, and then there's all those warrants about vehicular traffic, pedestrian traffic, number of acts and stoner, they just wouldn't need any of those. So, I don't know how Hadfield Township are doing it, some communities just put them in and wait for somebody to tell them that they were wrong. But we are taking measures down there to do some speed enforcement. Hopefully within the next week or two, we'll have data on exactly what's going on with the speeding conditions down there.
Yeah, back when I was on the department, we also, I went with John in Mount Leaven. But we looked at rumble skirts also. And a lot of people there, their thing was that it was almost like the complaints we get down on Lincoln Way when people get too close to the center line, all night long they're hearing "bruh, bruh." And so, they, they report when they first put them in, but after that, they were kind of wishing that they would just pay them over. So, it's kind of a catch point there.
Amy Altritt.
I don't know anything else to add, thank you.
Next, Dr. Elbert. Next to Park, the recreation report, Mr. Willis. Anybody have a question for Commissioner Willis? Can you add anything, Greenberg?
Just one item I'd like to put in my report. I know that some time back, the board commissioners had approved of the Warren Park bench for Warren Gardner at Braddock Strip Park in cooperation with the Chamber of Congress and two local scouts, a boy scout and a girl scout. That progress is now in motion, and we hope to have that thing installed hopefully by the end of October.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one's a police report. Emergency manager report, Keith Commodore. Anybody have a question for Keith? If not, police report, anybody have any questions for Keith for a second? Do you have anything for the board?
For the board, I'd like to address the young lady that stood up about the training. I just want to assure you and the residents that are here, that the department is very well trained. All our supervisors are required to go to Plaza Repulse classes. Our field training officers usually attend the field training officer class itself, and they're recommended by the supervisors on who the field training officer should be. As a matter of fact, one of them was supposed to go to the class, unfortunately he got deployed earlier this year. The officers go through, the MOPE did service class, plus there's many, many more classes they can attend if they put in for them, as long as our budget allows for it. So, we are very well trained, and I, I would compare us to any other police department out there. Sorry, sir, thank you.
Next, sir. Planning and engineering report. Fire official report, anybody have any questions on fire? Subdivision land development half page report.
There are two resolutions before you tonight. First one concerns subdivision of Robin in 2016, the Brookhaven pages three and four subdivision. And that is recommended for approval with three conditions and six modifications.
Motion approved. Second.
Disagreement. All of them favor the die?
Aye.
Oppose? Aye, that's seven zero.
Second resolution concerns subdivision 12 of 2016 and Adam and Carly Painter subdivision plan. And that is recommended for approval with one condition.
Motion approved. Second.
Disagreement. All of them favor the die?
Aye.
Oppose? Aye, that's seven zero.
That is all I have. Item number three is, I have...
I'm sorry.
I wasn't sure if that was under mine or under your charge. Huntington Marketplace was approved, I believe in July. And at the time, they had not finalized their SUI's planning modules. They have not done that, they've been circulated through WWMA and NHTMA. And because it's in the tax restricted service area of WWMA, it needs to be just for resolution before it goes on the DPP. So, I would ask that we could get that length so we can send that on.
Motion approved. Second.
Disagreement. All of them favor the die?
Aye.
Oppose? Aye, that's seven zero. Thank you very much, Michael. Next, solicitor review board. Mr. Abad, is that you?
Thank you, Mr. President. There are no actions items on the solicitor's report for this one.
Tom, your manager report. Andrews.
Thank you. First item is action to approve the August check register.
Motion approved.
Disagreement. All of them favor the die?
Aye.
Oppose? Aye, that's seven zero.
Item two is the budget report through August, if you have questions concerning that. Item number three is, Mark Tarnley is here tonight, he's our external auditor, and he's here to make presentation, brief presentation concerning the 2015 audit report that we received last week and to answer any questions the board might have concerning that. Mark?
I noted the accent on the word group.
Take as long as you want, Mark.
Board members, thanks for having me here this evening. I just want to touch on the highlights of the audit report that you may have received last week and your weekly package, and again briefly touch on a couple pieces of correspondence I gave you this evening. Some of the highlights in the audit report that I wanted to bring to your attention here. At the beginning of the audit report on page one, there was a statement of net position, if you will, of balance sheet. It lists all the assets and liabilities of the township, and that leaves you what is known as the reserves for the net position of the township. And that includes all, not just the short term general fund budget that the board budgeted on an annual basis and is most concerned with. It includes all the assets and all the long term liabilities of the township when combined together. In the past, last year, when I stood before you, your, your net position or your reserve for all of that was about $13,600,000, I'm using round numbers. This year, for all governmental entities, we had to adopt a new accounting policy, which in short is known as GSB 68. And what GSB 68 said is, if you're a member of a full pension plan, which the township is, belongs to the PMRS full plan for your police and non-uniform employees. It used to be in the past that on PMRS's audit report, they had to show the net pension liability that they owed out for all the member municipalities and other entities that were members of the PMRS. GSB 68 came on in our profession and said, effective starting with calendar year 15, each individual municipality who's a member of PMRS must show their proportionate share of that liability on your balance sheet. And, and all entities, all governmental entities have to do it. For North Huntington Township, going back, which is what we had to do to the beginning of the year, that net combined pension liability for leasing non-uniforms, $3.4 million. So, instead of having that $13.6 million net position, that knocked you down into the $10 million range. So, if you get a chance, if you're looking to draw the report, if you look under long term liabilities, you're going to see that hefty net pension liability, which is new for this year. I just wanted to call back to the intention of the board commission. The most important fund, I guess, as you know, for the township as we have any municipalities, their general operating fund. And in a couple pieces of correspondence that I had to receive, and I've also highlighted the results of that thicker audit report, just to make it easier for you to reference. But for the calendar year 15, you ended the year with a general fund balance of $5,691,000, which was a relative $58,000 decrease from last year. The reason I mention that fund balance is to put it in perspective. One of the, one of the ratios that the DCED and the Department of Education for our school district clients requires is to compare that ending fund balance to your budget as a percentage of budget, what's adequate, what's not adequate. School districts, when they talk about their fund balance as a comparison to their budget, they, the Department of Education says, we'd like it to be in the range of 5 to 15 percent. You know, your fund balance is 5 to 15 percent. That doesn't mean that's the right answer, that's their recommendation. The Department of Union Economic Development, which guides municipalities, they're, the PMP's, they're managing guidance. They don't specify a parameter, they just specifically say that they want you to ideally above at 5 percent or higher. So, that leaves a, a lot of latitude for municipalities. North Huntington Township's fund balance as a percentage of your budget is approximately 40 percent. That 40 percent is good until you have an unforeseen emergency, either an infrastructure or any other type of large industry area that you have to do, and that takes care of that 40 percent rapidly quickly. But as of 12th February 2015, that's your percentage just for informational purposes. How you did versus the budget, and once again, this is stated in those pages that I had given you at your leisure, is for the general fund, your actual revenues exceeded your budgeted revenues by approximately $920,000. Actual, exceeded budget on the revenue side by 920. With regard to your expenditures, your budgeted expenditures exceeded your actual, your budgeted expenditures exceeded your actual by almost a million dollars, $995,000. So, in both of those respects, the township did good in terms of monitoring the budgetary spending and brought in more proceeds and anticipated a regional budget process. And one of the pieces... And one of the pieces of correspondence that I gave you on page that's dated for this evening, on page three of that report is the one piece of correspondence that actually has, or maybe there's a, I'm sorry, has three pages. On the third page, we talked about operating results, and I have something to show there of the five year history of the general fund balance of the township. And if you look at that five year history, and this is simply your general fund balance, you're going to see a lot of consistency up and down in regard to what that number has been over the years here at North Huntington Township. I just wanted to call back to your attention. The middle of the audit report is filled with notes to the financial statements to help explain the numbers in the audit report a little bit better. So if you're looking at an item on your balance sheet, you wanted to know a little bit more detail about if you're likely to find a break down in that, the notes to the financial statements. One area I always recommend for my boards to look at is for the back of the audit report, in your paper case, starting on page thirty-five and I think going back to thirty-five to thirty-six, there's a lot of budgetary versus actual information specifically for your general fund. And I think when the board looks at that, it's detailed line item by line item, your revenue versus budget, and detail line item by line item of expenditures in each of your categories. So you can see as before how management and as you approve the budget did for calendar year 15, and use that as a pool going forward in terms of 2017 and future, where will we like, where will we have. Those are the pages to ascertain how the township did for the year. There's other schedules in the back of the report. As you know, you have more than just the general fund in terms of what you manage. You have a number of other causes, money, so to speak. With the fuels fund, we receive state application on an annual basis, your water fund, your life fund, your capital projects fund. All of the information related to how those funds did would be much smaller than the general fund reports do. But information on how they did is in the back of the audit report as well. If you're comparing this year's report to the last year's, you're going to see it's a lot thicker along the pages, a lot more information. And that's simply because, as I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation, this was the first year of implementation of that GSB 68 related to your pension plan. So everything from soup to nuts are required disclosures in the body of the audit report starting this year and going forward. And lastly, with regard again to those two smaller pieces of correspondence I put in front of you this evening, one is a required correspondence to the board at the conclusion of the audit engagement, and its purpose is mainly to alert the board if there are any disagreements with management or any problems in obtaining information during the course of the audit that I should bring directly to you as the board commissioners. And as you read through there, it's fairly valid report standard or industry, you'll see that there are no disagreements and no need for second opinion or any contentious issues during the audit process. And lastly, there's another piece of correspondence that I just referred you to, is operating results. There's some other comments in there, internal real comments that we make to a lot of our municipalities with regard to things just to watch out for and consider when you're operating the township on a day to day basis, which areas are more crucial possibly and others in terms of making sure that it's in a good place. And that's as quick and brief as I can get, John, and quality information in that report. If you don't have questions for it this evening, please feel free to contact me directly in my office with Commissioner Shepard. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Next item we have tonight is action to waive the building department fee for Shafton Volunteer Fire Department in accordance with their letter of July 28, 2016.
Motion approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Ayes, ahs, ahs, zero.
Item five is action to accept the right of way dedication from Mark and Kelly Hotz in accordance with the agreement dated September 15, 2016.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Ayes, ahs, ahs, zero.
Item six is action to approve the Westmoreland County Transit Authority Agreement for Fiscal Year 2016-17.
Motion approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Ayes, ahs, ahs, zero.
Item seven is action to approve the agreement with Hoffman Panel Control beginning January 1st, 2017.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Ayes, ahs, ahs, zero.
Item number eight is action to approve the CDPG application for 2018. Before this, a motion's made on this, the board, whoever makes a motion, will need to prioritize the two projects we have in front of you. One is the sanitary sewer lateral replacement program we've been doing for at least five, six, seven years, not any longer. And the other project is some of the ADA improvements here at the townhouse that we've talked about over the last few months. The county would like us to prioritize those projects and when finally becomes available, which one would like to do first?
I'll make a motion that we approve the application with the sewer laterals being the priority. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Ayes, ahs, ahs, zero.
Item number nine is action to set the date for Halloween trick or treat, Monday, October 31st, from 6:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m.
Motion approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Ayes, ahs, ahs, zero.
Item 10 is action to adopt the strategic plan 2016 connected to the future.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Ayes, ahs, ahs, zero.
Item 11 is a discussion item. We discussed it, I believe, at our last meeting. It did not have a full complement of the board here. The board was tied on what to do with the old K-9 vehicles. So hopefully everybody recalls that discussion, and we were looking at either keeping those vehicles in the fleet, in the police department fleet, and continuing to use them for a sub period of time, I would assume for a few more years, or selling them outright, or potentially just trading them in when we get new vehicles next year. We're talking about two vehicles at this point, that are surplus vehicles, we then longer use for K-9.
The discussion last time was of all three options. I thought we, there were pretty much two options that were on the table. There was one to keep them and put them back into the fleet as per the chief's recommendation and as per what we have done before. And then the other was to sell them.
Yeah, I think I put in the idea of trading them. It's just that are option the board may want to consider. You don't have to consider that one, but I think actually the chief is thinking that that may actually, if we decide not to keep them, that may be the best for us financially is to trade them. But that's, that's something the board should consider.
So that is, that is a new item to be true. I was going to say, I don't remember that discussion.
You're right.
Yeah, listen up. Yeah, I mean, my preference would be to put them back into the fleet to save weight and power on the other vehicles. But worrying that, it might be better to financially trade them in because they're, they're not in bad shape, right? They're not.
No, they're, they're in good shape. They have under fifty thousand miles on them. Matter of fact, if you want to see them, we can have somebody get down and get it. It looks to be a rig, a rig. Sure. I told Farrow, open up the doors, we're going to be logging. We haven't, I know the concern of Commissioner Martino was whether or not it would be sanitized sufficiently. We could bring it out here and anybody wants to go out and take a sniff test could be my guest. But the interior looks like it's brand new. We, we get on the average, we traded in the last ones when we bought our last vehicles. When we bought, I believe it was like fifty-five hundred, six thousand dollars a vehicle, from the initial bid, we were getting around forty-five hundred, five thousand, is that correct?
Well, we haven't sold one with that low of miles recently. We haven't been selling vehicles in the sixty to seventy thousand mile range, pre-conditioned. We were getting around thirty-five hundred, four thousand, maybe a little more. So it's hard to say. I mean, it's, it's an auction. You get a couple people bidding and drive the price up obviously. But I would expect us to be at or above four thousand, maybe a bit above that. It's hard to say, so.
So we would probably get more if we do a trade in on a vehicle, on a new vehicle. Again, just to go over the reasons for doing it, with five officers on the ship, with two steady shifts, I believe keeping those vehicles in service now, we'd have better rotation of vehicles. If you take a look at your available balances venture, and you take a look at the repairs of the vehicles up the year, up to the end of August, we are basically thirty-one thousand, three oh six. I'm anticipating us to be right around forty-seven thousand dollars for the year, which is a savings of fifteen thousand. And I would hope that would be better if we start this rotation. And then again, another big savings, rated it's, I believe, part of it's because of the price of gas, but it's also the fact that we're getting rid of these eight cylinders and going to the sixes. We're seeing about three to four miles per gallon more with the newer cars than we are the old one. So right now, I'm anticipating anywhere around thirty-five thousand dollars savings to the township. As I said the last time when we talked about the new vehicles back in, I believe it was March, for every mile, you talk to the fleet guy, they say you got to put three to four miles for a police vehicle. A lot of the times you spend sitting there with the engine revving. And I think with us putting them back into the rotation and getting them more use, that we'll actually be able to buy less vehicles per year and we'll get more use out of each vehicle.
So it sounds to me like out of the three options, the best bang for the buck would be to keep them and put them back into the fleet. This time I do.
Last meeting, we talked about this, I was in favor of going up, you know, rotation. I think you outlined a pretty good strategy moving forward, you know, maybe not buy as many cars, you know, every year. So I was in favor for it that time as well.
Yeah, the, when they're back in the fleet, especially being with one in the budget, we'd be looking to buy new vehicles. I mean, at that point, if we decide we needed more vehicles, we're going to get more money to trade them in. As far as the smell on that, I know the two officers who used the last K-9 vehicle, and they're pretty, pretty particular about their own vehicles. If you watch or look at theirs out in the lot, I know from working with them, both of them would not put up with an odor. So obviously there is odor in the last one that they reconditioned, and I'm sure they reconditioned it the same way that these would be of anti-use. I'm also sure that if there's an officer down there that has a problem, that he has allergies or anything like that, he wouldn't be forced to use the vehicle.
That's right. There'd be four other vehicles on the ship they could use.
Okay, so I can give them the bandwidth. Okay, Rich is smiling, but I'm still wanting to get rid of cars. You want to keep the cars, you want to put them back in rotation, you're saying you get fifty-five hundred dollars if you trade them in. So you keep them for a whole year, so your low mileage cars are going up. You going to get the same mileage, fifty-five hundred dollars if you try to trade it in? If you put it back in rotation, you get rid of those cars?
Obviously, I would say you might with the dime, that's right.
Absolutely. So you might as well put them on the initial bid and get forty-five hundred dollars or forty-eight hundred dollars worth now and trade them in now.
Well, that, I don't believe that's what Mike said. Mike said the higher mileage, so.
As you keep them, if you're going to keep them all year and then get rid of them, you're going to have higher mileage on them. Am I correct unless it's been stood out in the parking lot?
Yeah, and then, and Mike would put them on the initial bid and we'd get about forty-five hundred for them then. But again, again, I wouldn't put them on the initial bid. We got more money in a trade last year than we ever got from the initial bid. And I think that would be a condition because we know we're going to have at least two and a possibility of a third dealership now buying for the township's business on police vehicles. So I think it would be up to them, and I think we'll see even more money trade in wise than we have in years past. We've only, we've only done it for, I believe, yeah, last year was the first year. We've always put them on the initial bid, but taken whatever we thought in front of it. Last year was the first time we traded them in and got a substantial amount more.
I understand that.
I think Commissioner Martino is right. We are considering more mileage on the book. We're also looking at reducing the mileage on the vehicles that the other vehicles are used.
Because you're looking for a pure, a pure economic standpoint, if you're going to keep the vehicles for a few years, not a few months, it seems to make sense that it's the most economical thing to do is to keep the cars because you're going to have them in the fleet, assuming they don't have major mechanical issues, things of that nature. Rather than getting vehicles, getting more vehicles, you would be of other reasons not to want to keep them. I think economically, it'd be a pretty, it'd be a pretty easy calculation. I mean, I'll go back to classical economics that the professor said, the most economical thing to do with cars is buy an old one and run it until it's dead. It's not much fun. Nobody enjoys driving an old Peter car, but that's the best thing you can do in economics and employment. Well, it's gone, you buy another one for a thousand dollars. But that's, we wouldn't want to do that, of course, with the police department because you need things that are reliable. I think there's some other, if you have some other issues, I think that there's probably some other issues that have to be ignored, then I think economics is maybe, maybe in favor of keeping them, only because the chief said next year he wouldn't have as many cars with a budget. Originally, when he and I talked about this, I wasn't in favor, but I thought it didn't make sense, but I thought, well, if we're not getting ahead on the budget, it may not make sense. But he said, well, I'm not going to give you as many cars for next year to purchase. And I said, well, I think I'm sold then. So that's what, that's what's sold.
I'm willing to bet that the economic side of it is exactly what the taxpayers would like us to look at.
I'd just like to make one correction with Commissioner Shepard. If you recall when I first proposed this to the board, I said it may take us a year or two to get there because some of our newer cars have high mileage on it right now. But after that first or second year, instead of buying two, three cars every year, we'd probably be looking at buying maybe one to two. So it would be, overall would be a tax savings, plus the cars, every car would get a twelve hour break between shifts.
Yes, yeah, I would agree with Commissioner Martino. Yeah, we're not going to get as much for the trade in value if we put another forty, fifty thousand miles on these cars, but we're going to get more than that and the money that we get in savings by using the cars that we already have and trying to find a new one.
And if you remember, position of the board, we should be getting rid of these cars until they have at least around eighty, eighty-five thousand miles on them.
I'll make that in a form of a motion yesterday, last time. Unless the other boards are having comments, but that we keep both cars and put them back in service.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
We'll call Mayor Shepard.
Mr. Harold.
Yes.
Mr. Higginson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bertani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gray.
Yes.
Commissioner Vasenda.
Yes.
Commissioner Casera.
Yes.
And Commissioner Martino.
No. It passed. Ayes, ahs.
And I believe that is actually the last item on my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Shepard. Next one, further board comments. Anybody have any questions?
Yes. This time I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include discussion and possible action regarding the township's employment rate of the chief of police.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
We'll call Mayor Shepard.
Commissioner Harold.
Yes.
Commissioner Higginson.
No.
Commissioner Bertani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gray.
No.
Commissioner Vasenda.
Yes.
Commissioner Casera.
No.
And Commissioner Martino.
Yes. Motion carried forward for this point is added. It is a new item. We will have citizens input.
If you ask for citizens input, you're going to have to put on a motion to accept.
There's citizens input. Anybody want to speak last?
This, this will be the only opportunity for citizens input? No? I don't think it should be because they don't want the discussion. I think they should be afforded. If there's any action, there should be another opportunity for, if there's a motion.
And I agree with that because if there isn't for additional motion, it's not needed to be.
Yes. Is there a citizens input?
Let the discussion begin.
This is a discussion.
Okay. So Michael came in, the officer, eight months ago, eight and a half months ago, came in with the same attitude I've taken with everything up, a new entities up. Came in with the same attitude I've taken with everything up, a new energy cycle into it. Look, listen, and learn. And from that, make assessments and decisions and judgments. In the past eight months, based on what I've experienced and witnessed, I do not believe our current Chief of Police is the best fit for our township, nor do I believe he is the leader to take our police department into the future. With that, well, do we wanna discuss that further or? I'll make a motion now. I would simply say I disagree with everything you would say. Okay. Pretty much sums it up.
If that's your opinion, Rich.
It is my opinion. I am entitled to it. And you can speak down to all of us like you have for eight months that you've been on the board. I hear you're the smartest guy in the room.
That's you, Rich. I mean...
I guess my only question is, that's fine, Darryl, you have a nice statement. Do you have any factual base reasons why you feel that way?
Yes, I do.
I like, you know, I think residents...
I'm not gonna get into a county report here on the bench.
But it's not a thing to report. It's just wholly responsible for your position. You have a right to for your position, and that's fine. And we might disagree, and that's fine too. But I think the residents out there that came to hear your opinion, might should hear what your opinion is and why you have that.
You have to get reason.
But we're reasonable.
No, you don't have to share, but you owe it to the residents.
Okay, I think you have to share. It hasn't been shared with us.
I think it owes it to me.
Exactly.
You came to here eight months, talked to me once, that was an executive board session meeting. We had two emails. Hillary, how does he know what kind of people he's talking to? You got half the police department back here. Why don't you ask them? Action speak louder than words, Chief.
I'm gonna ask you what we're talking about.
You have to, you have to speak up and give a reason of why. You can't just say you like someone and do away with their job. You have to give an actual reason to justify it.
National Bureau of Justice.
I mean, we're still discussing, and like I said, I'm not done discussing. If you wanna make a motion, you can make it, but I'm not ready to vote on it. I mean, if you feel that way, I would like to know why you feel that way. I mean, you have a right to decide, obviously, but I think the residents have a right to be accountable too.
Exactly. You know what? Based on the county reports I've seen, however, and the debates we got into, it's not worth it to decide right now. It's gonna come out, it'll come out in a litigation, I know that. And I'm gonna hold my cards for that.
And you're talking about a lot of money in litigation. You're gonna spend it at township's money, so I think you, you need to tell them what you felt you did wrong. Because you've not even shared with some of us other board members. Maybe you did what you were, because it's possibly have an agenda.
Go again. This is my decision, my decision alone.
I know if the board should made comment, you were gonna claim the house, so is this part of the claiming the house?
It could be, and it may be that.
Can't take someone's job without...
All right, so, all right, Chief, let me ask you this. In 2014, you made a comment whenever you had another officer dismissed, that his continuing actions led to a division among members of the department and have led to serious personnel problem that you alone cannot fix. Well, the board did their part. What have you done to fix that divide? Because from where I sit and what I see, there is still a divide in that department, and I believe it is even worse than it was back in 2014.
I would have to disagree with you.
I think you put a disagreement.
I think the divide in the department is caused by certain members of the board. Allowing certain members, and I was supposed to say military members, allowing them to come to the board with all their complaints and issues. Those members have caused the divide within the department. When one member has issues with another member and they voice their opinions to them outside the department, that's not anything for me to address. If there's any name-calling or issues raised within a department while they're working, that's the time for me to act, and I will act as Chief of Police. When I made that, when I made that comment, it was because that officer caused that divide. The divide designer now has nothing to do with me. It's the divide that was, the divide that was caused between the military officers getting what they think they deserve and my support and backing of the township, and that they are getting everything they're entitled to plus more according to local, state, and federal law. And I don't see, I don't see the divide that you see. And again, half the departments here, who are the departments, again, who are the officers you're talking to? We had this discussion once before, and I told you, wait, 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 you asked me a question. Allow me, give me the opportunity to answer it, sir. You told me once before in a prior discussion that you went to an officer and you asked him his version of events when he was going to be disciplined. And I told you I wouldn't fault you or any other member of the board for doing that. But I also asked you to please come to me. There's two sides to every story, sir, and that's the one you're not doing. And you are speaking to the officers, you're speaking to individuals, and you never, never have come to me to address the issue with me. That's not a good leadership quality. I said to this board once before, and I'll say it again, my integrity and my ethics are not for sale. If I believe that something is wrong, I will say it's wrong. If I believe that something is right, I will say it's right until I am proven wrong. The divide, the issue isn't with me. The division, the issue is with individual officers wanting more because they are so-called special quality people and they believe that they have the votes of the majority of members of this board. That's what the issue is, and that's what should be addressed by this board. Don't allow anybody to come up here to speak to any commissioner without going through the chain of command. I don't do it. I don't address any issue with a commissioner. When they call me and they ask me for a question or ask me to do something, it always goes to the manager. The manager then forwards it because that's my chain of command. By you people allowing them to do it, by you people going down there and looking for these issues and these comments, you are the ones that are causing the divide and causing the chaos, Stan. Don't put it on me, Mr. Bertani. It is not on me.
Kind of echo those statements. I believe, Darryl, we've just gone through a strategic planning session, and everything is supposed to go through the township manager. Members aren't supposed to interact directly with employees on personnel matters. And I think the whole board did kind of agree to that statement. There is a group of board members that do interact with township employees rather often. And if you wanna disagree with that, that's your opinion. Yeah, you could have that. But at the same time, I believe the whole board did agree with the statements from the gentleman that came in here and said that all correspondence should be through John, not from a commissioner to an employee.
And I recall you getting on this board and mentioning your military service and how you're a firm believer in chain of command, and yet you have violated it how many times? Of course you disagree. Now, let's, 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 first of all, let me, let me answer. And then you can speak. Let me comment. Thank you. I appreciate your approval. The, you know, you have violated that how many times? And we've had this discussion about meeting with these military members, these military officers, how it subverts the, not only the chain of command, but the collective bargaining agreement. And like the chief says, we can't be giving them something that we shouldn't, basically. And that's what this was. That's why they didn't go to the union. That's why they didn't go to any of the levels of appeal that they have to get what they wanted. They wanted that, that's more of a flunky political meeting with the majority of the board so they could get something in an end run.
And then beyond that, I, when we actually decided to have that meeting, that was a public meeting. And at that public meeting, it was decided that Tony Martino, the board president, and someone from the split serves department would meet him with John. Then I get an email from Mr. Shepherd stating that Commissioner Harold and yourself came to this meeting. Now, obviously, residents didn't know you went to that meeting. You stated publicly that that was gonna be Commissioner Martino.
I asked to be there at that meeting.
Did we not vote at that meeting? Did we not vote at that meeting? It's in the minutes. We voted that. Tony would be the only one there.
We'll get to minutes.
And then we also agreed, and Tony agreed on record, that he would get us a report out of that meeting. We have yet to get that report from under twenty-nine.
And one thing I wanna say about the military people, they are special people. They put their lives on the line every day across the...
So every police officer in this town...
None of us would have jobs without the military people.
But I mean, I, I wouldn't mind actually, Commissioner Martino, giving me an answer why Darryl and Commissioner Harold weren't allowed at this meeting. That you agreed to...
I asked to be there, Rich.
No, no, it wasn't discussed at all.
Yes, it was.
At the meeting, I'm not just saying... Yeah, at the meeting, we did not agree that you, John, and the split serves were there.
They did ask to be there.
But is that not what we voted on?
Yes, that's what we voted on.
Whether he asked or not is really not that relevant. The relevant point is, in the chain of command and the township structure with the professional manager structure that we have, the managers should handle these things. Tony supported the courtesy to go to the meeting because he's the chairman of the board. I don't think anybody would have a problem with that. It's the individual commissioners that then start sticking their nose in and showing size and try to lobby for one side or the other that caused the divide that the chief was talking about.
Is that pretty much what you did? Did you know what you got scared to start your nose in or start a bin?
Tell me where I started then. Oh, oh, oh. Absolutely. You know, if you're responsible, I was asking at the meeting, so I...
What are you gonna ask for?
I know.
All right, because, because of my background, we already received, I'll go ahead and say this to you all.
Yeah, you know, I see that.
So...
Sometimes...
But that's not, that's not called a discussion. And you know what? I could go on here and I could probably incriminate another individual sitting on this board for other actions of sticking his nose in where it probably doesn't belong either. But I'm not gonna do that. All right? And I could probably go further on about the chief and other, and first of all, it's not just about the military. And one of them you talked about there happened before I was a commissioner. So there you have it. That's why I didn't talk to you, because I had, because I wasn't even commissioner yet.
If you've got something to say, say it.
All right, let me, go ahead.
I'll go ahead, please.
Let me add something here. I've been through six chiefs. No matter what chief was down there, there was always division. Because you had people that, you had the doers and you had the people that liked to put on a show, maybe didn't do their job. When this chief came, he added some discipline to the department. A lot of times, weren't real happy with that. He added some things like business checks, traffic stops. After the traffic stops for a while, and part of it was the guys' fault, the way they were holding the traffic stops too, because I know there was people that were stopped maybe twice going down the highway at night because they had burned out railings. Because guys were circumventing the system that he was trying to do to make guys go out there and do their job. Then the board stuck their nose in, and I was on the board at the time, and said there would be no more, you know, more traffic stops. That can't be. That would be like us constantly micromanaging John, the chief, Rich Alberts, Dan Miller. That's why we have John. That's who we're supposed to go through. And this thing with the chief, unless somebody can show me that there are some improper things that he's done and that, and I have not seen them, I've not been made aware of them, you say there are, obviously, the four, you know about it, we don't know about it, or I don't know about it, I'm not hoping to spend six to seven figures in the lawsuit just to replace him.
So you're gonna lose six, spend six or seven figures against the discriminations of veterans you're gonna file against our township?
No, I didn't say that. They keep these veterans into it. Same as, same as the meeting you brought up about the millions while you weren't arrested by me for the millions. The reason you weren't arrested by me for the millions was because the people that were working here at the time was afraid of retaliation from you, like you tried to do at the beginning of the year against office like us.
Which is, I'm gonna start crying. I, I hope they won't. Chief, well, I'm just... You do a reader's drug law with the township, correct? Yes, sir. Could you explain to me why after August the 10th, I got ear beaten from my son's parents about our chief not knowing what drugs are an issue in this, in this township?
Or, wait. Or...
Take a note. I don't know. Obviously, your son, your son or whoever it was, their parents never talked to me. I, I attend regularly the reality tour where we give a presentation on the drugs in, within this community, the problems that there, the problem drugs that are in the community. We also go to the ninth grade orientation, give a presentation for the parents on what to recognize. So they have a thorough knowledge. You know, there's, there's parents out there that had no clue what the Stamp Act was. We, we put up a PowerPoint presentation. We show them. We show them what the kids refer to as a pin. It's a syringe. I, I don't understand where this is coming from. So that's just absolutely ridiculous.
Hold on, Rich. Well, I'm sure. So what you're telling me is there was no reason for those parents of my son's parents to need my program?
I have those parents, sir, they never, it was multiple parents. They never talked to me about it.
Of course they did, because I'm the one who's representing the township.
Please, ask them to call the chief.
All right, well, I'm gonna go a step further. So you were there at the presentation, I believe Detective Sage, you are here, correct?
Yes, I am.
And Detective Youngstead, you were both there?
Correct.
Sage, I believe you had on a gray suit with a purple tie. Kirk, I believe you had on a pair of jeans and a flannel shirt. And the chief gave a presentation on what to look for, a slideshow presentation. And he put up a picture of cocaine and explained that appearances is cocaine. He then proceeded to say that I do not believe we have a problem with cocaine in this township. And at which time, you turned and looked at Sage and Youngstead, and they were both shaking their head, yes, we do. And then after that, you put up a picture of crystal meth. And you said the same. You said, this is crystal meth. I don't believe we have a problem with that in this township. Again, you turned and looked at Detective Sage and Youngstead, and they were both shaking their head, yes, we do.
That's not correct. They were shaking their heads agreeing with me. Right now, our biggest problem, our biggest problem in this township is heroin.
Chief, absolutely.
Detective Youngstead...
Because if you ever write a report, yes, we do.
No, they were shaking their head. They were agreeing with me.
Chief, I was sitting in the audience, and I wish, goodness, you do it.
There they are. What were you shaking your head yes to? Did you agree with me or this?
And I know what you said, Chief. I know what you said.
Chief, we don't have a crystal meth problem. We've seen crystal meth in the area. It's coming out, like, we, I can't talk about that part. We, we...
Disagree. All I'm saying is, that's what, when, 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 I heard the worst of that, or other people, Mr. Bertani, I witnessed it. You've been here for forty years, and I do not believe you have a vested interest in this.
Sir, I will tell you again. I will tell you again. I'll tell the whole, you didn't tell here. We do not have an issue right now in the township with cocaine. Do we, do we have cocaine in the township? Yeah. Do we have an issue with, do we have an issue with crystal meth? Not as big as we do with heroin. We have people dying almost on a weekly basis because of heroin. Those are our biggest issues. When I addressed the crowd, I said, at this time, we don't really have. And Detective Youngstead confirms. He's the guy that goes out and does the buys. He's the guy that does, look at your sheets, that they tell you what drugs we're getting every month on a monthly basis. It's not cocaine, it's heroin. It's heroin laced with fentanyl. You, you misunderstood what was addressed, sir. I looked at them to confirm, and if they had something to say, if they had something different to say, they would confirm it. And that we talked, at the reality tour, we used to do mushrooms. Detective Youngstead and I talked about taking mushrooms completely off the side because we have a very, we're a little bit with a plan on, on how long we're supposed to talk. And then I get lopped into a, hey, listen, you gotta do a forty-minute presentation in fifteen minutes. So we try and lop off as much as we can. Detective Youngstead will tell you, we haven't really made a mushroom arrest here in or around the area in years. So we took it off the slides. Those slides are updated every year. That's why at the very bottom of the heroin thing, it has the corner statistics for overdoses on a year-by-year basis for the past ten years. I can tell you, we've had a sixty percent increase in, in overdose deaths. So please, don't come at me with that. If you're gonna come at me with anything, please, don't come at me with that. All my training experience in years of making the arrests, and you were mistaken. I can tell you right now, I signed... I can tell you right now, outside it's dark, and you tell me, no, and it's light. Yeah, I know.
I've got other spots as well, but I'm not going into it. At this time, I'm going to make a motion to terminate the township with agreement of May twenty-fifth, two thousand twelve, with Chief of Police under Section Four, very rapid approval, effective immediately. What about Citizen Thomas?
We can't get citizens' input until there's a second.
You will get the opportunity to speak.
You'll get the opportunity to speak. No, I'm not showing a plural answer.
I'll second it.
Discuss it. I'll get citizens' input. One at a time, you need to make your name and address for the record, remember being busy.
I mean, we'll have assistance, because we'll have assistance input, and then we'll have our own.
Okay, so my name is Otis Cesarbo, and I live at four forty-two Butterfield Drive here in North Huntington. I almost wasn't gonna say anything, just listening to what you guys had to say, but I will completely disagree with what you guys are saying about the chief not being aware of the drug problem. This guy gives so much time with the reality tour, that's run by Gina Davis and a few other people. Works all day, then he comes at night to these tours to speak with the kids and parents and community members, and the presentation is very laid out. So, I completely disagree. He's got a lot that he can't. So, chief, I thank you for that, because I know your heart's in the right place for the kids and for the families and for the township. The second thing is, when I first met the chief, I'm the chairman of the Norman Youth Commission, so we work with kids that get in trouble, and they send them through, you get referrals from the police officers, from the judges. And chief was very busy when he first signed in. And I invited him to our first meeting. He's trying to get everything sorted out, get established in his new job. Came to our first meeting, completely supports our Norman Youth Commission. So, from a citizen perspective, whatever's happening behind closed doors, from a citizen perspective, we see a guy who's doing his job, who cares, who's trying to run a really good police force that we appreciate. So, the thing that's divisive here are the commissioners. The commissioners are divisive here. I mean, this, if I go to a Norman school board meeting and I listen to these Norman school directors, they're getting things done because they work together as a team, and they're trying to cooperate with each other, and trying to find the best solutions to problems. I see personal vendettas, I see people being, I see political things happening that are causing our township to move backwards than forward. And I can't... Last time I came to this meeting, I couldn't walk, and that was on behalf of Detective Youngstead. There was some things going on there. Guys, listen, we live in a really good township. We have a great school district, we have a lot of good people here. There's a lot of things that the citizens are just not happy with. We're just seeing some things happen where it's just, what's going on? And I've lived here, I'm retired from the United States Air Force. I moved here, my last Air Force assignment was right here, and I decided the state wanted to raise my family. I have never seen the BS that I've seen now. And I'm absolutely focused, and I'm trying to do it, just like I do now.
Mr. Cesarbo, can you tell me when you started noticing this BS?
I would tell you, probably within the last three or four years, within the last couple of years. And again, people didn't have to come to these meetings, you guys were getting things done, working together as a team. So, if you think that the police department is divisive because of the chief or whatever, I will tell you, we have to work together as a team. There's a lot of things that are going on, people fighting each other over stuff that's moving the township backward. And trust me, people are noticing. You want good families to move in the area? We gotta get it together. We gotta get it together. So, chief, I just want to say thank you, because I remember a couple of years ago, you came to my meeting, you met all the commissioners, you sent us cases, I've seen you at the reality tour, and the public, and the other people speaking on that behalf. That drug thing is completely wrong. I really do believe that you're trying, from my perspective, and from a lot of my friends who live in the township. I just want to say thanks for all you do, and I think your heart's in the right place.
Thank you.
Make your name and address for the record, please.
Regina Davis, ninety-nine forty-one Buckingham Place, North Huntington, Pennsylvania, one five six four two. The first thing that I would like to address is that our military are very special people, and they put their life on the line every single day. And so do our police officers, every single day. And the stuff that's going on in the world today, they don't know what they're walking on. Every single day they leave their house, they don't know what they're walking into. As far as your information, Commissioner Britannia, that you have about the chief's attitude on drugs, you could not be wrong. Five years ago... Let me finish. Five years ago, I was introduced to a program called the Reality Tour. I went to one of our North Huntington police officers who's no longer with the force, and I asked him for help. And I said, I want to bring this program here, because it has been expressed to me by the school board, by the school administrators, by teachers, that we need this program here. And he looked at me, just like you're looking at me right now, with what an expression on his face. He made me so uncomfortable that I just walked away. I didn't know any police officers at that point. I knew him because he's always out in the community. So I went to him for help, and he made me feel like a fool. When I met Chief Lasecki, he said, whatever we can do to get this program off the ground, we will do it. In the beginning, because Officer Bolden did the presentations at the school, the chief came, Officer Bolden came, and Detective Yonestad came, every single month. They had a uniformed officer there every single month. I came here a couple of years ago to thank the North Huntington Police Department and all the help that they have given this community on the Norman Reality Tour. At that time, and you were not here at that time, I opened an invitation to any one of you to attend. To my knowledge, actually, I know for a fact, none of you have ever attended. But Chief Lasecki and his officers have been there every single month without fail. I'm not going to go into what the reality tour is, the details of it, because you obviously don't care, none of you have ever attended. But, this man stands in front of these parents and these children every single month and tells them what are the real problems. That's what we want to know. We don't want to know, okay, so, yes, there's cocaine here, yes, there's other drugs here, but that is not the real problem. We want to know what is being done, what are they saying on our streets? What are our kids at risk for encountering? That's what we want to know. That's what these parents need to be educated on, so that if they see that in their house, if they see that in their child's pocket, that they know what to look for. There is no police officer more dedicated to this program than Chief Lasecki, Officer Bolden, Detective Youngstead, and in addition to that, there are other officers that come and volunteer their time. Tom Harris, Dave Sage, Jay...
Curdy. Curdy.
Curdy, sorry, Jay.
Sergeant Officer Cussera.
Yes, actually, he was there, his son volunteered for us. So for you to say that this man does not have an idea of what the drug issues are, I think you need to go back and question whoever you were speaking with. And as a matter of fact, I was there the night at the high school when they spoke, because I spoke as well, and I heard his whole speech, and I think you're way off base. And I agree with Mr. Cusserbo that the division is not there, the division is right here. And for some of you to come here and to blatantly put your vendettas in front of this community, you should be ashamed of yourselves.
Megan Shaper, two zero nine, one and a half, we're in... One thing that I've noticed tonight, from what I understand, is that people in the department don't like Chief Lasecki. I've been a supervisor for twenty years of my career, I'm not always well-liked either. It's part of being a supervisor. You can't please absolutely everybody, and when there's new roles and changes that come to a department, to any kind of business place, someone's gonna get ticked off of those roles, and they're not gonna like him. You can't do away with someone's job because he's not liked by some people. You have to have concrete evidence of what he did wrong, something illegal, something that is not tolerable. Just because people don't like their boss, you can't do away with someone's job. That's part of being a supervisor, you're gonna get complaints, I've had many complaints over my life, and I still have a job.
My name's Rich Mosky, I live at eighty-sixty-four Pennsylvania Avenue, North Huntington, one five six four two. I've lived here all my life, I've raised four kids here. And I attend meetings way back in the past. I mean, I live here because it's a great community, but as I go forth, it's a shame to see how we're divided at this board. Just like any job, any occupation, anything you do, you do it for the cause of the people, not the agenda for yourself. And I think there's a lot of that going on here in this board. Some nights we have meetings here, we didn't even come to a agreement on a vote, we fought amongst each other on the vote. Now, this community is getting very divided by the people because of your board. You appear to be a positive influence on the community. As far as the drug thing, I'd like to address that, I'll give those people a talk to about that. There's great exposure in this community about the drug situation. The reality tour, the police department, and they had a big seminar at the high school that everybody was welcome to attend about the drug situation. They had a gentleman from Pittsburgh, Officer Leck, they had board from the FBI, they had people there from the commissioner, West Point County Commissioner. This is all very well attended. Now, if these people would get their head in the situation, what's going on, they're worried about drugs, why wouldn't they attend some of that? I don't even have kids in school, and I attended that because I still have a concern for the kids in the community. I'm the chairman of the board of the Norman Chamber, and we have a great respect for our community, and we have a great community, but like I say, there's such a divide here, it's terrible. And I just attended a seminar the other day, this gentleman spoke, and it was fantastic, they talked about gun control, and why didn't you buy gun control, how to have gun control in your home. How you can say this man is not going in for the community is dissuading you on it. But again, let's put the divide, and let's work for the people of the community, not for individuals.
Susan Castle, four one three, Arrow's Dog, North Huntington. I have a question for the commissioners. Everybody wants you to be in agreement all the time, that's not a reality. Absolutely, you're gonna discuss and you're gonna disagree, but I want to hear from the board at that point to get rid of this gentleman. I want a reason from every one of you, because this is this man's livelihood. I think he deserves it, and as citizens who voted you in, we deserve it too.
Hi, my name's Melissa Fessenda, I live at seven eleven, Kimlam Avenue, one five six four two. I would just like to say, I was at the same meeting that Commissioner Britannia was at, I was a senior at Norman, and a seventh-year freshman at Norman. And I have to say, I was quite embarrassed when the chief spoke about his lack of understanding of the cocaine and crystal meth problem in the township. Whether it's a problem or not, I think the issue that I had with it, and friends that I was with had with it, was his lack of confidence and understanding and knowing what the issues were, having to look at other officers to talk about what those issues were. Furthermore, my friends that were there with me had no idea who he was. They attend a lot of community events that we have, that the Parks and Recreation Department sponsors, they've never seen him there. I've never seen him there either, I attend all of them. My husband was on the recreation board at one time, so we didn't have a choice but to attend, and now we enjoy going. But, that's just my opinion and what happened, and I'd like to support Mr. Britannia's approach on how things happen with the high school. I was there too, I heard the same here, and my friends asked me about it at work.
Taking the reality tour?
Any other decisions?
Excuse me?
My example of a market...
I think that's uncalled for.
I'm a resident of the north side. I own two buildings, fifteen pieces of property, so the municipal planning code says I can speak, you know. So, contributing to the tax fund here, I just want to get this straight. We don't have a case of malfeasance, we don't have a case of misfeasance, we don't even have a case of non-feasance, and we are going to terminate a position, which most likely will result in litigation for this township and an extreme cost purely because of interpretation of an officer's facial gestures and a disagreement on the priorities or the existence of the drug program. I'm just a little confused. I got this on the screening outside, the live stream, because it was busy. So, this is the grounds for termination. This is the grounds that we are now going to engage in massive litigation. That's it on there, believe me. I am a business owner, I have served on two municipal authorities, multiple governments for twenty years. Gentlemen, you are opening this township up for yet another costly affair. Whether you like the man, you don't like the man, all I can tell you is that this will not stand the muster, and we will all pay significantly because of this action. Again, as a taxpayer and model resident, I think we should at least have some malfeasance, some non-feasance, or some misfeasance, other than interpretations of whether an officer went up or down on his side. Gee, that could be worth half a million dollars to us. I get a real poor feeling, Zach. I really think that there should be some serious consideration in this, you know, other than just this interpretation. I haven't heard anything here, nothing at all. And believe me, he gets entered fire, we're all gonna hear something.
Do we have any other decisions?
My name's Bob Schuster, one one eight oh one, Kentucky Road, North Huntington. I've been a resident of this township for seventy-one years, I'm probably here longer than most people in this room. You're laughing at my age, definitely. But anyway, I've probably saw six or more police chiefs in this township. I can evaluate them all, they were all good. This man is better. Not because he does things a different way, he goes after his drug problems. Give you an example, the road patrols out there are constant. I have to look in my rearview mirror constantly. My son's brother just got it on down a hill right here by the building, they got him. So, he was complaining, I said, boo. The night patrols. I've had thousands of dollars stolen from my site. His men are out there. I'm not gonna talk about drugs, I think there was enough, but I am gonna say a few things about it. I had a problem on our site about a week ago. I called for police to come over there to control. It took three minutes for the first party to get there, and four minutes for the second one. It was stopped immediately. I don't like this talk, that you're talking about this man. You're talking about military and chain of command. In nineteen sixty-eight, I got an experience in my life, and I know what a chain of command is, and you guys don't follow it, and you need to follow it. He is the boss, not you. He is his boss. Why would you take the time, any one of you, to go down and talk to, not talk to him? Or talk to your boss, which is John Shepherd? I think you're making a big witch out of this whole thing. I'm upset about it? The other thing, I've built a base in this township with taxes. You all know it. I've probably built two thousand top houses in this township. Add that up, what's bringing money into this township? Not you sitting there, people out working. And I've got three hundred people on these jobs that are working every day. And you want to take away, I earned a half a million dollars, why does it cost you for a million? And you wanna take away, I heard a half a million dollars, as long as it must do you for a million or more. And the other thing that's gonna happen to you guys, you're making accusations against him. I think he has a legal suit against each of you individuals that voted against him. So what'd you like to be putting up for the next five years, paying attorneys? You're wrong, you're totally wrong. This is a witch hunt and I just can't believe what you're doing. It's a witch hunt because he killed immediately into a police officer. That police officer used to visit my home hours and hours a day. He did the right thing. There was materials that were taken from my job that I supposedly gave to him. He did the right thing by getting rid of him. He sued the township even in here, hold you guys back here. It's time to wise up. If you think I'm gonna stay in this township and build here and waste my time for my, get my kids and everybody there, and seven grandkids in this township, I have a vested interest here. I don't think you know what the hell you're doing up there. You shouldn't be there if you're making these kind of decisions and a man you can't even make a good accusation. I heard nothing here that he said that he did wrong. I hear about policemen that hang out in restaurants most of the night. That used to be the way it is, it isn't now. I don't see that. Mr. Youngson got nailed for going in and buying some cars one time. Ah, what I used to see was terrible. There was upwards on end. So if you're gonna terminate this man, I'd just be a work woman, rush, work fly when you go there. And it's gonna upset me that the people in North Huntington voted you in and you're gonna let him take a million dollars or more away from us. I worked my butt off, I'm still working, full-time. Don't insult me, guys, pissing this money away in this township, excuse me for my language, guys. No, I got to say.
My name's Paul Hamilton, two-ten Willow Avenue. I'm here to address the board just to bring the dinosaur that's in the room that needs to be discussed. And Mr. Gray, this particular pertains to you. These three military men are not complaining about money, there are many, many other issues. You keep bringing up the money aspect of warm and fuzzy. It's not about warm and fuzzy, it's about discrimination. Documented discrimination that the township residents do not know about. There are several on the line, there are certain members who have met with these military people and brought out, and I'm not here to fight myself out. He's a law right now, cannot be here. But the board needs to know, any other four members of the board need to know, this is not about money.
Other decisions?
I don't know, if you wanna respond citizen by citizen or if you just wanna have this discussion. I mean, obviously, all the topics are pretty much just...
Throw it all together.
Yeah.
Throw it all together. Throw it all together. And if I may start, we started last, the first by Mr. Hamilton. I didn't bring up money tonight and we have talked about money before. And yes, that was the claim of some of the commissioners here, that we owed them money, that they're owed back. We have discussed this intraeider, forever. And you're right, we did talk about it. Now, my position, and I think some of the other board members' position is, and I believe our managers' position, our professional manager, and our solicitor's position was, these military officers have received everything monetarily they are entitled to under federal, state, local, county laws and military laws and North Huntington Township policies. That was the issue, but there is a complete denial that they have gotten that. Except, the meeting that was held on August twenty-ninth, that we were supposed to get a report from, we never got. And Mr. Martino said he would get us that. So Commissioner Higginson requests there are solicitors' notes from it. And I'm only gonna quote one line from it that I think sums up all of it. As soon as I find it here. I had it highlighted a little copy. Just give me one second.
That's where it kind of caught that.
Okay, so, third one. Oh, it's coming right here. Okay, and, and, right. Money, money is clearly not the issue and you allege discrimination. And we take discrimination very seriously. However, no particular charges have been leveled about discrimination. We implored them to put something in writing, to go to the union, to go to the manager, to give us specific items of discrimination. We have not received a single thing to address. So they had this meeting, which in my opinion, as somebody said, Bob Schuster, maybe, that it was a witch hunt. They're looking for reasons because of the divide, not only on this board, the divide in the police department. Somebody else made a comment that she's a manager and you're never gonna please everybody, that's true. It's even worse in politics though, where in elected office municipal government, when you can go around your boss, you can go around the chief, you can go around the township manager and go right to the board of directors, if you will, of the corporation. And if you give enough of them on your side, nobody else below them matters. So if you can sway four people to do what you want, it's gonna get done. And that's what these people have done. They have failed to go to their union with a legitimate complaint, otherwise you've been served with agreements. If there was discrimination, we should be sued. I will stand behind a lawsuit if we discriminate it. But as far as I know, nobody on this board is aware of any discrimination. Because we've never been presented with anything that says, "Hey, you did this to me." And here's the line I wanted to quote from our solicitor's notes, and I don't know whether it's his thought, I tend to believe it was during the interview process, one of the officers said this. But it says, "Much of it could be described as being chicken shit." And I agree, that's what this whole thing is with those guys. If there's a lawsuit, let them file it. You don't come circle to them, the chief, the manager, the chain of command, and go to the board of directors to get their way. That's what I mean by warm and fuzzy.
Mr. Gray, you are so totally uninformed, asking your同事is about the law. If you go out to this board, do you admit out here that I want to be... Mr. Hamilton, can you give a report?
You need to... The decision input is complete at this point. Okay, pardon.
I heard the same thought today after I'm on fire here.
I guess if we wanna address assistance input, I think all the citizens here know, the four board members that basically have acts to grind, every single one of them's friends with a former employee. Some of them ran for office for that reason, because they had acts to grind. Daryl's been a member of Circle of Voluntary Fire Department for how many years, you can tell me? You know, and he's been on there with Bill Sombo for that many years? And, no, no, it's just a statement of fact that you are.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it's a statement of fact that it was at the polling places while you were running for election in your support.
I'm not gonna deny that, absolutely.
And you were on to Mike, you were on to Mike Vazina, you were on to Mike. Bill Sombo was riding around with your election signs on his truck, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, you pronounced my name wrong, but you, yeah.
My apologies.
You're right, you're right.
And then...
Is there a law against that?
No, there's not a law, it's just a statement of fact.
Then that comment means absolutely nothing. Okay? When you're talking about, when you're talking about board division, before I got on this board, you had division, but you were in charge. So it meant no difference to you because you guys were in charge. Now you're not in charge, it's all grinding now.
No, it's not grinding, I think that's the, there is. I think Otis Deserbo hit the nail on the head when he said the divide started three or four years ago. Well, let's look back at what happened three or four years ago. A chief came and did his job and somebody's no longer here. And that's when this whole divide started and that's what campaigns were about and that's why we're in the situation we're in. Because of one person who isn't in this room tonight.
So if I move down the board, Commissioner Harrell, and it's been clearly stated, reported on paper that you had many runs in with the chief for different circumstances, I don't know, you need to reiterate them. So you personally may have acts to grind with the chief. And that's my personal opinion, if you feel differently, that's it.
Well, if I can say something, Sombo, I believe, let you a job in Johnstown as a firefighter, right?
I'm gonna get a job, I took a civil service test and passed it and turned down the job offer.
And he helped get you the job if you turned it down, so...
How did he help me get the job into civil service test?
Well, he asked people...
Was surrounded, Bill, was surrounded.
City of Johnstown's corrupt, I guess, too.
Pardon me? Was surrounded.
Yeah, okay. I'll do front of, I, please, Commissioner, your clock.
And then, I mean, then I'll go to Mr. Martino, I mean, I mean, you've been on Circle of Voluntary Fire Department for some years, Bill, and I would imagine you're close friends with him as well. So I mean, that's my personal interpretation to you as residents, that those four board members have acts to grind because their friend got removed from position. And now they're trying to grind the act and get back to the police chief for doing his job and standing up for the community.
And didn't get the chief...
Has nothing to do with Sombo.
Who's the first guy you've ever met?
Especially more to tell the...
You guys, everybody in the audience had their chance to talk, so it's our turn to talk, okay? This has nothing to do with Bill, no matter what you think, not. But there was no convincing you, no convincing Zach or Dwight or anybody in this audience, well, maybe not everybody.
It's obvious.
And then, and I guess that...
But that's what you guys think.
That's my opinion. And I've heard from one board member that he had two loosely based reasons why he wants to get rid of the chief. So I'll understand your reason why you wanna get rid of the chief right now.
I'm gonna hold my reasons, okay?
And that's the same thing, because I haven't heard one good claim, neither has any of the residents in this township heard one good claim to get rid of this man by doing a good job. Residents came here to speak for this man and his offense.
You can't fire someone without reason.
Yeah, which is a million dollars. We do, we need to fire...
Convince us otherwise.
We need to fire these...
So I mean, as you as a resident, you obviously see board commissioners don't listen to the residents. So all I can urge you is to keep coming to these meetings and let them know how you feel. And then when it comes to election time, maybe elect someone that's competent, that actually listens to the residents, not someone that those personal agendas, because they have acts to grind.
Thank you for saying that in common, I appreciate that.
Just lie down, lie down. So the board comments, they're on speed.
I do have one more thing to say. It was said that sometime during the night and in the past, that he's not out there physical with the public and that. You know, I personally have given two talks with him, one which was mentioned here today. And both times I called up and asked for an officer to go and he says, "I'll go with you." He's also working on a program which is wills for first responders and vets, where a company comes in with lawyers and that and they say that, they have to sit down, give the information, they have the lawyers write up a will, once they look at it, say it's okay, it goes over to a note reader and it's totally free. And it's gonna be for our first responders, police officers and veterans in the township. Of course, they can't do hundreds, but you know, when he got this call, he could've just said, "Well, no, we're not really interested in that." No, he called people, he called some different people for funding because we have to provide breakfast and stuff like that. So he is out there in the township, regardless of what some other people may think.
All those in favor, Jack?
I'll call the, anybody can call it, I'm gonna roll call the...
Manager Chuck, you wanna restate the motion to table?
Um, excuse me, before we have the vote, I would like to make a motion to table this item. Pending more information, maybe you can be offering the chief a chance to go to some classes and improve himself. Yeah, a motion to table supersedes that, thank you.
It's our money, it's our time.
There's no discussion on a motion to table, so it goes right to a vote. All those in favor, Jack?
Aye.
Vote?
No. Roll call. We're trying to make a point that if you people know, it's very clear who's doing this.
We have a board actually.
I think they have a candidate.
Just do the right thing.
You're still in the middle of a vote, you're still in the middle of a vote.
Call the...
Mr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Higginson?
Yes.
Mr. Britannia?
No.
No, I gotta change my vote, I mean, no.
This is a motion to table election.
This is a motion to table?
Commissioner Brad?
He didn't understand the question.
Yes. Commissioner Vasenda?
Out.
Questions? Commissioner Casera?
Yes.
Commissioner Martino? Craig?
You should've gone directly to a vote on the motion to table and I think that Mr. Harrell's vote was a no vote. I think it's pretty clear.
Well, that being said, the motion failed four-three. I have one question for the solicitor before we vote. Has Mr. Harrell permitted a vote on this since he's been involved in so many issues with the township between the arrested Circleville Fire Department, which was, he was later found...
Not guilty.
Not guilty of, but he's had a lot of involvement with the police officers and the millions investigation. And there's been some charges leveled against the chief by him over the years.
Sure. I think the question that you're asking me, Rich, is does Commissioner Harrell have to accuse himself in any vote? Is there some sort of a conflict that exists with his vote? And, you know, I think that it can't be said that he may have been a critic over the years, but I think that when you talk about recusal, especially in the court system, that's within the fact finder's sole profits. So Commissioner Harrell would have to decide whether he can form an unbiased opinion on this motion and whether he's able to vote appropriately and at a later time, that may become an issue.
All those in favor, Jack?
Aye.
Vote?
No, we're not. Let's just take a read of the chief.
Commissioner Harrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Higginson?
No.
Mr. Britannia?
Yes.
Commissioner Craig?
No.
Mr. Vasenda?
Yes.
Commissioner Casera?
No.
And Commissioner Martino?
Yeah.
I would, for one, I would like to make a motion to add to tonight's agenda to appoint Al Parsons as acting police chief with all the duties and responsibilities of chief of police of North Huntington Township at the pay rate and that of the previous chief. Subject to negotiation memorandum with bargaining the duties to commence immediately.
I make a motion to table that item. Oh, I'm sorry, I tabled and added it to the agenda, so I can...
I'm gonna make a motion to table aggressively and just to table adding, adding the agenda to include the motion that was just laid on the table.
Commissioner Harrell? Commissioner Higginson?
Yes.
Commissioner Britannia?
Commissioner Bertani?
No.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Cessna?
No.
Commissioner Casera?
Yes.
And Commissioner Martino?
I don't remember if I heard a second. Yes, I said... They have... They have... I would recommend, because the board discussed this executive session, I would believe that the solicitor might have a... You don't have to take that advice. That's what I would recommend.
I make a motion when you're into executive session to discuss this.
All those in favor, do I?
Aye.
Second.
Good, good. I do get your bus. Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
My wife's car. You know what I'm getting?
No. That's a smart woman, there.
But you have again... Really? Did she ask? Did you go? You just got off. It was pretty fun, pretty fun. I heard you. I heard you. Hopefully, first and best candidate. And we die. I was surprised. He did!
Okay, okay. Sit down. Oh! Oh, Jimmy Cricket. Really? You promise? Yes! Yes! I really remember.
You missed your mic. Should we get your drink straight? I didn't mean to get your drink straight. I was just trying to...
Thanks. Thanks. Oh! Oh! Really? You promise? Yes! Yes! I really remember.
You missed your mic. Should we get your drink straight? I didn't mean to get your drink straight. I was just trying to...
Thanks.
You already talked? What is she, saving? She's saving. One year. In '05. '05. More back. Not a... Too much force. Must. Yeah. You should have... Just leave it. I was watching it before I came in. Come over to the corner. I'm over the corner. I was like, you can see it from here. Oh, just now, just now, just now. Yeah. That's all I'm talking about. All right. I thought they shut off. I'm just waiting for them here. I'm waiting for them. They're waiting. 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 Oh, just now, just now, just now. Should we begin? Yeah. That's all I'm talking about. All right. I thought they shut off. I'm waiting for them here. I'm waiting for them. They're waiting. 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 All right. All good? No questions? I'm not looking at your shoes. I didn't work. All right? No? No. Oh, okay, yeah, yeah. Are you still having things on? No, right. How do you do? Wow. It's nice. It's nice. Can you... Something like growth? I've never been. Oh, shit. I wish I could. I've never been in here. There's shit. Okay, off call. Next week, let's do it. Next week, chick. Yeah, I'm careful. Oh! You sound like you're doing chicken before rallying on. I don't play no... I'll say it. You behind your father. She wears on her heart, right on her side. So my first, sir, for our reference, and we think that you have a problem with the card guns, the games you're in. So, please call me on, people like that. Hey, my pleasure, Steve. You turn on your back? Yeah. For sure. Tomorrow. Can I go back? Yeah, always back. I don't think you're... I don't want to be over. Thank you. All right. All right. No. 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 My pleasure, Steve. You turn on your back? Yeah. For sure. Tomorrow. Can I go back? Yeah, always back. I don't think you're... I don't want to be over. Thank you. All right. No. 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 It's a big group for two people.
Yeah, right.
How about it, Joe?
Uh... Oh, shit. I guess it doesn't matter how it happens, it is kind of luck.
Yeah. 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 It was out of the blue to everyone. We didn't know anything about it. We knew the fire was coming, because we knew so much about it. We did not know that they were reporting our...
He's on your campaign.
Hello.
He's saying the truth. How great is that? Yeah, convicted felon. Oh, is that right? Yeah. The... The... Yeah, the ice... Ice melon. Harold. A-T-R-O-L-D. Okay. Remember that. The... You should make restitution to this punishment. Yeah, okay, I will. Right, well... I write, you sure will. Yeah. Please. He's the one that made the comment. Call him out. I love it. Dave? I think I backed him with it, bro. No. Yeah. 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 Great, so the risk table, we're gonna start going, we're gonna start going. Thank you. I think it's... Commissioner Martino, I'll make a motion on the executive session.
Second.
All those in favor, do I?
Aye.
Vote? Aye, yes.
Um, now, there was a motion on the floor that I made a motion to table action on. I forget what that motion was. Could you repeat it, please? Uh, or John, maybe you can help, help her out?
Well... Commissioner... Commissioner Cessna?
Excuse me?
Was Commissioner Cessna sort of pointing out on Carson and that, and she, you made a motion to the table to add an act to the agenda, and then, as one's honor, I'm going to go to executive session.
I thought we voted on...
I think that was... I think that was defeated. That motion was defeated.
Right. And the motion that remains on the floor is the motion to appoint the acting chief.
Correct.
That's the motion that remains on the floor, so if there's going to be a change to that, that motion, the second, would need to be rescinded.
And the motion was, who made the motion?
Mike.
I need to restate for our clarity.
She just did restate.
I thought there was some salary reference in there. I didn't hear that from her.
She probably doesn't have that written down. She'd have to go back, actually, for her reading.
No, that's not even the person that made it.
Yes, ma'am. I'm just gonna ask. Ask permission.
Well, sure, yes. Let's get a clarifying for the...
Okay. Uh, I rescind the motion to add to the next agenda to appoint Al Carson as acting chief, all the duties and responsibilities of the chief of police of North County Township, at the pay rate of the previous chief, subject to negotiation memorandum with bargaining unit, duties to commence immediately.
Thank you.
Mr. Harold, you also proceed, your second.
Yes.
That's it? Do we have any further board comments?
I guess I'll state one. I'll act myself as a resident, not as a commissioner. What transpired here tonight was ugly. And obviously, you know, four board members can make decisions in this township, which we obviously saw tonight, but I don't believe that reflects the residents that are still here and the residents that were here tonight. And I'm disgusted, and I know three of you personally, before all this commissioner business, that when I ran for office. That's all I'm gonna say.
Any other? Good luck. Go on, thousands.